All right. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. It is 6 o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started.
Yeah, one kid.
We do have a quorum present. We have Trustee Clayton, Trustee Corker, myself, Trustee Benyon, and Trustee Bustos. We'd like to thank the applicants also for joining us here tonight. We have Irene Healy, Ellen Mandeville, Kaz Thea, and Mr. Johnny Galgano will be joining us via phone. I'll ask at this time if there's any additions, corrections, modifications, or substitutions to the current agenda. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and get started. The meeting will proceed as follows. We're going to have some opening statements and remarks, or opening remarks by me, just explaining the meeting. We're going to have some opening statements from each of the candidates. And then we have a list of a few questions, different than the last round. And instead of asking each candidate the same question back to back to back, we've, each candidate will get asked the same question, but they'll be shuffled around, so they'll be asked in different rounds, I guess you could say. And I've asked Ms. LaChance to go ahead and read those questions for us this evening. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with some opening statements from the applicants. And Johnny, take it away.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Well, again, I'm happy to be here. Thanks very much for the time. I think that most of you know me. I've come in before during public comment on the issues that I felt it was important to voice my opinion. That before most of you previously, when there was the opening of Zone 4 position. Except I think Kami was not on the board at that time. In my mind, it's, I'm here because I feel as though that I can bring my experience and qualities to the table, help you guys have a different view, if you will, aspect. I have a lot of experience that you don't necessarily see on a normal job description or resume. And that comes from the amount of time that I've spent traveling the world in my career in the Merchant Marine. I'm currently in Dubai right now, making this phone call, for the example of that. I've had many, many types of work within this community, in the Merchant Marines. Social worker to travel agent, a master, to employee, employer. So with that, I feel as though I can offer to you a lot of different skill sets. I worked for the oldest maritime union for over 25 years. I'm familiar with collective bargaining agreements and my own self-understanding. I sat and testified in the National Labor Relations Board hearings very early on in my career. So again, these are things that really know about me, however, these are things that I have been a part of. Ship is basically its own little world. We have our many different parts that need to be addressed on a daily basis. And when you sit in the chair at the end of the day, it all comes back to your desk, you have to have the skill sets to deal with all these different parts. So with that in mind, again, I bring this experience and these varied skill sets that you don't normally see to the table. And consequently, that's why I've offered up for this position. I have the opportunity to watch, rather than attend a lot of the school board meetings. I feel more comfortable doing it at my house. It's easier to watch you guys when it's streaming. Unfortunately, I can't do that here. The Wi-Fi network that we have doesn't support streaming. However, obviously, I'm able to call in. But again, I'm well aware of some of the issues that are going on. Funny looking at the questions here that they sent out. So I'd be happy to address those going forward. That's basically what I have for my opening statement. And I thank you again for your time this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Johnny. Ms. Thea.
You're most welcome.
Hi. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. I live in Zone 3 in the North Ridge subdivision. It is my hope that you can make a decision tonight and not pass on this important board duty to our county commissioners. I believe that a school board must be responsive and receptive to students, staff, parents, and the community at large, encouraging open dialogue, transparency, and accountability. Board members must consider input from all individuals and groups, remaining impartial, and researching and weighing all the facts before making a decision or taking action. A board member is a trustee of the community. Board is responsible for establishing and maintaining a structure to support our community's vision. I would like to see a shift back to a structure of power where constituents are once again integral in helping structure this vision. The best school boards find ways to empower staff, provide positive, transparent, and collaborative leadership, and institutionalize parent and patron involvement in providing policymaking guidance. Yet, many of our citizens feel like they're not being heard. All district constituents play a critical role in creating the district's visions and values to be carried out every single day. A school board must build public understanding, support, and participation. I feel that I would be able to do this not only well, but impartially and constructively. As evidenced by the signatures of the folks who endorse me, and currently there's more than 900, I have the support of a diverse group of citizens. I'm an accountable, transparent leader with a voice that represents our community well. I represent an independent and impartial voice, and I will work hard to reach out to the greater community for their input. I've always been a strong advocate for youth by supporting their education, exploration, and growth throughout my entire professional career. I guess that was Johnny, huh? Much of my experience here and in other communities have been in developing curriculum, teaching outdoor and environmental education, advising high school field research projects, directing kids' outdoor programs, teaching outreach in the classroom, leading youth wilderness expeditions, and bringing projects to the district for the WOW students. Additionally, I have extensive public service experience, having served on many boards, past and present. Our schools exist to serve the educational needs of every student. My skills and efforts as a board member would set, center on serving all students and patrons in our district. I will encourage all district stakeholders, students, teachers, parents, administrators, and staff, taxpayers, and all other community members to be active, engaged partners in this endeavor. Broad-based participation is critical if we are to be successful. I know I can help rebuild trust in our community and improve morale where this has suffered. I stand for fairness for all members of the district. I'm a problem solver, a bridge builder, and a unifier, and I will look for common ground. I have the enthusiasm, innovative ideas, and energetic, positive personality that would be an asset on this board. I understand the crucial role a public plays, a public school plays in establishing, in helping to establish a community's vitality. That is very, very important. I wholeheartedly believe we have a strong, capable team of outstanding teachers and staff working with our kids, and I am grateful for their hard work. With these folks in mind, I would like to work on a more student-focused budget in future years, to see more of our district money applied closer to the ground, so that money, so that money can better support students and teachers in the classroom. Finally, as a champion of students and with my deep base of community support, I hope you will find me to be the best candidate for this board position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mandeville.
I'm Ellen Mandeville. I'm a Zone 3 resident, and I want to serve the community as a Zone 3 school board trustee. I'm here because I care about our students, I care about their education, and about maturing them for adulthood. Conflict among people is inevitable. It can be healthy, or it can be toxic. Unfortunately, I believe we are seeing evidence of toxic conflict within the school community. I see conflict between board members, between the board and administrators, between the school community and the larger community. From my perspective, no one entity is completely innocent, and no one entity bears all the guilt. Currently, we have good education in our classrooms and in our schools. I am proud to have two students in this district. My primary concern at present is that as the toxic conflict continues, it will damage the education we offer. We are all on the same team, the board of trustees, administrators, teachers, staff, the larger community. We're all on the same team. The question is, to what ends? To what ends is to support students, their education, and their maturation into adulthood. Every time one entity attacks another, we are attacking our own team. So I believe we need conflict resolution. Sweeping under the rug won't improve the situation. Keeping, if we keep doing what has been done, we will get the same results. So I believe we need to develop better conflict resolution techniques and true collaboration, which means communication in which everyone is heard, developing communication and processes that work toward consensus. Conflict resolution and collaboration is difficult work, and it's completely worth I volunteer to help to resolve conflicts, to build trust, to further improve the education we offer. We are the adults within the school community. We must model good behavior to our students. Good behavior includes conflict resolution, consensus building, treating each other with respect. Please appoint me to the Zone 3 seat, that I may work with you all toward improving our school district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Healy.
My name is Irene Healy. I'm a 44-year resident of School District Zone 3 in Haley. I am retired from a career teaching at Woodford High School. I retired in 2006. And I would prefer to open with ideas about improving our schools, our board, our path to great public education in Blaine County for the next five, or 10, or 20 years. But I need to address an accusation that has been directed toward me by the local newspapers. Although I'm a well-qualified candidate for the school board, it seems that I'm somehow flawed because I'm supposedly with the administration. And it's true that I've learned all the administrators' names and positions, and I've asked several of them questions about their responsibilities. As a board member, I would expect to ask a lot more questions in order to understand our district's operations. My goal is to see clearly how the district serves its students, from the bottom up and from the top down, so as to grow, preserve, promote collaboration at all levels, even when big changes might be needed. And my main goals are not related to administrative pay. I consider that issue a pothole in the road to educational progress, and one that can be dealt with and repaired. I'm also with the custodians and the maintenance crews who service the infrastructure in which our students, teachers, and principals work and collaborate. I consider them all part of the team. And of course, I'm with the teachers. And that term includes librarians, specialists, counselors, and social workers. Anytime we say teachers, we mean that group of people who interact with students, people who have direct contact with our students. I'd like to be part of a board which hears regularly and in a structured way from teams on our teaching staff about problems related to curriculum, testing, learning goals for individuals, learning goals for groups, and their proposed solutions for doing our best work for our students. For the purposes of this interview, I need to point out that I'm also with 600 Blaine County citizens who signed a letter of support for me, either online or on paper. And of those 600, 194 are voters who live in School District Zone 3 and have endorsed me to be their representative on the board. Also, 88 of those 600 signers are current or retired Blaine County teachers, and 46 others, I didn't double count, are my former students, who are now adults, and in some cases, the parents of school-aged children. It's heartwarming and strengthening to have heard from all of them. Those teachers and former students know from direct experience how I can see the path to long-range outcomes, work hard on tasks and attend to many details, and collaborate with others. They also know that I don't stand still when I see something that could be done better. But mostly, I'm with a full range of citizens in Blaine County who want strong schools that serve the needs of our diverse community. It does after all reach from Fish Creek through Muldoon, up through all the canyons and over the top to Smiley Creek. Thank you to all of you from all over the county who endorse me and who would trust me to represent you on the board. The board of trustees of a public agency has to maintain a very high level of transparency and accountability. But also, board members will be held accountable by the public for much more than their scrutiny of numbers on the budget. They will be remembered, perhaps for decades, for their long-range financial planning, the maintenance of our bricks and mortar resources, patterns and board interactions with staff, student growth as described by several measures, and perhaps most of all, for the district's climate. As you know from my previous interview, I think climate control is the underlying solid base from which a lot of important improvements can emerge. And earlier, I paraphrased Sir Ken Robinson, who said, "The real road of leadership in education is climate control, creating a climate of possibility." I'd like to work on a legacy of an effective board, working with a community of people with diverse views, facing 21st century challenges in public education. Some writers on school administration describe that as the work of what they call a "high-functioning board." It's not the status quo. I think the status quo was not good enough for our kids and our county in 2016. Thank you for considering me.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go ahead and turn the time over to Ms. LaChance to share the questions.
I just want to remind all the applicants that you have approximately three minutes to answer each question. And, can Johnny? And each of you, even though we'll go one by one, the sheet that you have in front of you with your questions is the order that your questions will go in. So we're going to start with Johnny, and we'll go around, and on the second round, that'll be your second question, if that makes sense. So Johnny, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Okay, we're going to start with you. If you could describe the qualities and behaviors that board members should exhibit.
Sure. And I think that the, there's a document on the website, actually, that I was looking at prior to the meeting, and it says, "What are the qualifications of a good school board member?" And in that, they brought out a number of, basically, traits of a good school board member. First one, obviously, what I said before was background. Again, it says here that you need a background in diversity, basically, so that you can have a good view of all of your stakeholders. And I feel as though, as I've said before, diversity of my career to bring that. Also, in the qualifications of a good school board member, we need to be visionary. And we have to understand that there's change, and we need to be looking towards the future and not the past. And I believe in a simple axiom of prior proper planning prevents poor performance. So using that as a guideline, if we look forward, then we need to plan forward. Another good quality of a school board member is tolerance, to avoid prejudice. You have to be mindful of the diverseness, or I should say, diversity in ethnicity, socioeconomic propositions, especially within our valley. You can see both those that are very well off and those who struggle. It's not lost on me that there are people in the valley who have problems with housing and troubles with finding enough food. Today's education is extremely complex. It's not the way it used to be, where the three Rs were basically the accent. So we can't use simplistic approaches. We need to think outside the box. Another good quality of a school board member is the desire to serve all of the children within the community and not just small groups. We need to be able to understand all of the issues from each level, so that we can help all of them be successful as they go through the district. Another good quality of a school board member is the ability and to spend the time needed to be aware of all of the issues that we need to make decisions on.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Galgano, or thank you, Johnny.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Galgano was my dad.
I know. I'm trying to remember.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Thea, please explain how a board knows if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out. What actions should the board take if goals and policies are not being carried out?
Well, I think that there's, of course, achievement standards to meet, but I don't think that it's enough to just look at test scores. I think you have to evaluate the process. I have, I think you have to use your staff very closely to evaluate how classrooms are being run, how students are, needs are being met. I think oftentimes, we put too much on test scores, and I'd like to see a broadening of that, to really evaluate through close communication and committees that are formed throughout the school districts, to talk about. The leaders in each of the grades have information, and the, and the, all the teachers have the information and how their classes and how their kids are doing. And I think if, if there's certain goals and policies that are not being carried out, it's not enough to bang your head against the wall and say, "This is an absolute policy we need." You have to reassess. You have to pull back, take time to evaluate the actual policy. Is it important? Is it functioning? Why isn't it functioning? And how can we make it better? Because if something's not functioning, it may be something inherent in the policy or the goal that you've set for yourself. Now, of course, there are standards for achievement, and we know that we have to meet some of those. But, you know, the, the information that I've been reading about STEAM education is so much more than just test scores. It's, it's really about the process and the actual learning that's going on in the classroom through the interconnections of, of classes with the teachers. You have to have good communication. You have to know how to properly evaluate things. You have to identify where, where goals may not be working, and think outside the box in how to make, maybe get yourself there. If there's, you know, kids that are not gaining the understanding of reading or speaking, maybe there's other methods to apply than the ones that you're currently using. So again, it's self-evaluation as much as evaluation of the actual goals that you've set in place and the achievement standards that you've set in place. But I think the teachers are critical to answering some of those questions, and the parents as well. I mean, a board really is represented, representing the community.
Thank you for your.
That's hard to answer in three minutes.
Thank you.
Ms. Mandeville, how will you promote collaboration and partnership between the board and district leadership?
I believe it begins within the board, that we, the board itself needs to develop collaboration and partnership as a team. And it is developed through communication with each other, through listening, and in the, I have a book, Strength-Based Leadership, that it discusses discovering the strengths of each team member and maximizing those strengths for the benefit of the entire team. So I think that the board itself can begin through discovering, each person discovering their strengths, and then collaborating together, how can we use those strengths to build an excellent team? And on page 76 of this book, it mentions, of successful teams, as a result, successful teams often have an organization-wide influence. So I think it definitely begins with the board itself, that the board itself needs to become collaborative and a partnership, and then extend that to the district, use the skills learned there, and extend it to the district leadership as a whole. I definitely need on-the-job training if I become the trustee. I don't have all the answers to all these questions off the top of my head, but I am definitely, I am definitely eager to learn and to do this. But essential to all of this is communication, building trust, being respectful, listening and discussing, being collaborative.
Thank you.
Ms. Healy, how will you build consensus and support in the community around the work of the school district? Who do you bring with you to the table?
Who do I bring with me to the table? Not really anybody, or, on the other hand, everybody. Because in order to build consensus and support in the community for the school, I think we have to listen to the entire community, as I said, up and down the valley, left and right, out of the canyons, everywhere. But to build consensus and support, I think the key thing is explanations. I think the key thing is clarity and explanations of what the goals are, where the district hopes to be going, how it hopes to achieve those goals, and then in a structured way, ask for input. I understand the board's requirement to allow time for public comment at the public meetings, at the monthly public meetings, but I think to get a wider range of public feeling about what's going on, there needs to be a more structured way to hear from more segments of the public, to invite them to speak up, to kind of suggest, to prompt them to speak up on, on certain issues. Because building consensus goes in two directions. The explanation has to go to the public, and then the, the fears, or the tributes, or the questions comes from the public back this way, and then something has to go back the other way. And I think it's not, it doesn't happen randomly, and it doesn't happen at the monthly meetings. It would have to happen in an organized, structured way, where we have a every-two-week-something-something, or every-month-something-something kind of meeting to go, to get that back-and-forth discussion. I can't guarantee build consensus. That is certainly very hard. But I think maybe an agreement that the board is doing, would be doing its best to get community support and community feedback.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Johnny, this next question is for you, and if I have the speaker turned up as loud as I can, so if you could speak a little bit louder, just to make sure that the entire board can hear your answer. Your question is.
I can't believe it. Somebody's telling me they can't hear me.
Okay. Your question is, whose interests should matter in the governance of a school district? In what ways should they matter?
Whose interest should matter in the government of a school district? Well, obviously, the stakeholders should matter most. However, at times, that is slightly skewed, and the view is lost. But at all times, and in all situations, and whenever you decide how you're going to move forward with policy, as I understand it, that's what the board is supposed to do, we should keep in mind that first and foremost, students should be looked at as the primary. And once we get to students, then obviously, the parents of the students would be the secondary. And then finally, as it matters and how it impacts the community, and I would imagine in that case, we would. in that case, would be what are the costs involved with how we, at the end of the day, when we decide on a budget, the way it's supported is through, by, by the taxpayers. So, I would say that those groups would be the, the ones that should matter. Now, in what ways should they matter? Well, for the students, it would be curriculum and how it's presented to them. For the parents, I would imagine it would be how we communicate towards the parents and explain our actions. And then finally, with the stake, or I should say, with the taxpayers, again, we would have to justify how we proceed and how we spend their money, and the way we do our job with regarding policies and, you know, what's going to cost money. Because at the end of the day, the taxpayer will look at that and say, "Is that actually worthwhile? Am I happy with the fact that the school district is bringing these costs, and I'm willing to support that?" So, I think those are the interests that should, that should matter in the governance of a, a school district, and, and those are the groups that, that we should be mindful of when we are involved in that. Did that come in a little bit clearer and louder?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, ma'am.
Ms. Thea, as a school board member, from whom will you seek advice or input in weighing key decisions? How will you go about accessing these individuals or groups?
Well, seeking advice is actually a very critical piece to governance of a school. And I think that everybody, the community at large, the staff, the teachers, the parents, taxpayers, all need to be sought after for advice. I think weighing key decisions doesn't fall just on five board members. It falls on the input from people in our greater community. It's critical. It's critical to have each of those voices heard. Taxpayer may have a different input from a teacher, who may have a different input from a staff person who, you know, although, all the input is, is critical. I also think, obviously, good communication amongst the board members is key, and finding that consensus where it can be sought is absolutely key, and balancing the viewpoints and the inputs that you get. And for me, you know, it's pretty easy for me to get out there in the community and talk to people. I do a lot in this community. I reach a lot of people. I talk to a lot of different communities. I have 900-plus signatures that's supporting me because I'm a doer in this community. I've proven leadership and communication and interaction with lots of people. I think the involvement of our community is key, and I'm an engaged citizen, and I love interacting with people, and I love to reach out to people, and I would do some of the things that I've seen you guys do, is hold community meetings and open houses. And I would reach out, you know, in different ways to, to not only hear from them, but inform them on what's going on, so they can be best informed, so they know how to respond back to certain things, because unless they're informed, they don't know how to provide the, the critical, important input that they can offer and should be offering. And this, like I said in my three-minute little speech there at the beginning, engaged citizenry is really key to success here. And so, I would really actively engage the community at large, and certainly teachers and staff and administration and board members. And I, I don't have a problem with that at all. I, I enjoy that kind of work very much, and I've done it a lot in, in lots of jobs that I've held in the past. So, committees and, you know, reaching out is, is quite easy, and, and it's a must.
Okay. Ms. Mandeville, please describe the qualities and behaviors that board members should exhibit.
The qualities and behaviors that board members should exhibit? That's great. Reading back the question feels like a book report. I want, it's definitely someone who believes strongly in education as foundational for civil society. Public education is one of the things that have made this country a phenomenal country. So, first, so that for sure. I'm someone who values all people, and that would be shown in the behavior of respectful communication, listening, is somebody who would be collaborative, which again, is someone who listens, who communicates, who not only receives information, gives information, has an open mind during that process. Again, I said respectful, they have integrity, they know right from wrong, and they follow what's right even when it's hard to do. And sometimes, that's quite hard to do in this community. So, and also willing to serve in obscurity in my, in when the Essential Board, Essential School Board book that Mrs. Healy made me aware of last time, last interviews, and I since have discussed with members of the community, it talks about when a school board is doing really well, it can be really lonely, because everybody stops paying attention. It gets, I guess you get boring after a while. Also, on page 91, it talks about who makes a good board member? Basically, anyone who cares about the education of all students in a district, who is willing to serve in a nonpartisan capacity, do the homework required before meetings, and be a team player. And that's, they base that on interviews that they've done with many boards, when they're seeking out high-functioning school boards. You know, toot my own horn, I believe I possess those qualities, but it's, you know, the behavior is being respectful towards others, being willing to listen, being willing to collaborate towards, it's not just my idea, it's the group's idea, and everybody brings something to the table to contribute, and it's hashing out what's the best way forward. So, in my opinion, that's, those are the qualities and behaviors that a good school board member should exhibit.
Thank you. Ms. Healy, please explain how a board knows if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out. What actions should the board take if the goals and policy are not being carried out?
First of all, the board needs a clear statement of its goals, clear, effectively-published statement of its goals. And to know whether or not they're being carried out, I'd like to suggest that the board have a regular schedule, a cyclical program of reports from teachers and administrators and, and all the department heads, explaining what's happening and how the goals are being approached, whether they've been reached or whether not reached, or shortcomings or whatever they are. Rather than hear about problems when they become problems, I would suggest, at the July board meeting, for example, at the July annual meeting, the board set up, plan ahead a series of reports from various parts of the school district, the, the teachers, the departments, the curriculum, the dual immersion, so forth, to know, to talk about goals that are being accomplished. And same for policies. The policies, I guess, may depend on the reports from the principals, and the same thing, I would say, regularly, the principals need to give a 10-to-15-minute presentation to the board about details that the board won't he be hearing about when it becomes a problem, but will hear about before it becomes a problem. And if goals and policy are not being carried out, then questions need to be asked about whether there were problems with the policy itself, or whether there were problems with the procedures that were set up in order to carry out the policy. And so, questions need to be asked. There needs to be curiosity on the part of the board, rather than any kind of blaming about what, what happened here, how could it not happen again, how can we work this out? But the key thing, I think, is a clear statement of goals and a cyclical pattern of information gathering from the various parts and pieces of the organization.
Thank you.
Thank you. Johnny, how will you promote collaboration and partnership between the board and, excuse me, district leadership?
Okay. Well, operation, basically, is something that needs to have all parties engaged and willing to engage for it to happen. So, with that in mind, you can't have collaboration unless all of the folks who are supposed to be involved in that are part of that process. I think that is one of the, the issues that we've come to, basically, where we're not all willing to be a part of the collaboration. So, to get people out there to be a part of it, it's going to take some doing. There's a certain amount of apathy, I would imagine, with the general public. You have small interest groups that are always going to basically come in, and they want their agenda moved forward, necessarily include the whole of the group. So, with that in mind, you need to basically get the whole district leadership, not just the superintendent, or the operations manager, or whatever John Blackman's being called these days. But when, when we talk about the district leadership, I think we need to, you know, basically include everyone there, so that we do receive all of the input that we can possibly garner. The best way to do that is to seek their input, to readily go out and ask for it, to make them feel as though that they matter and that their opinions are valued. If you engage with them, then hopefully, they will provide you with the information that you seek, because you will find that regardless of how much you ask and how much you try to engage, you will find people that are willing to be a part of the process. You can't basically drag them into the conversation, so at that point in time, you have to look past that person or that group, and then basically engage and formulate with those who want to be a part of the process. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Thea, how will you build consensus and support in the community around the work of the school district, and who do you bring to the table?
So, I think we're actually at a moment in time where there's more awareness of the, the structure and function of our school board, more than I've been aware of in the past, actually. And it's partly because of, you know, it's in the newspaper, it's on the news, it's been emails going back and forth. And I think that in the past, I think it's been sort of the silent, hard work of boards, and people haven't paid that much attention. So, I think unfortunately, I think, Ellen, you said it earlier, you know, you might be lonely eventually if, if a board is, is not in the news all the time for controversy, and I hope we get there soon. But I think you have to continue to educate the public on the important work that the school board does to govern the public school district. And again, I firmly believe that a, a community is only as vital as its great vitality, vitalness of its school district. And so, you want people to really believe that school board has a, a very important role to play in the governance and, and, you know, the education of all these children in this valley. So, I think you have to be really engaging, and you have to be a good leader with the community to, you know, inform them of this good work and the importance of the work in order for them to even care, to even want to find time to be interested in what's going on. Because building consensus and support for what you're doing, first, you need that education by the community at large. And so, you need to be a strong, engaged leader. You need to explain the importance. And then, to build consensus, you need to be open-minded, and you need to listen, and you need to respond, and you need to provide opportunity for them to provide that input and to become engaged patrons and community members for our great school district here. And we should be leaders, and we should be innovators, and our children should be succeeding, and much of that is going on already, and it's a beautiful thing. And we need to continue to engage as many people in this process as possible. Who do I bring to the table? I'm not sure what the question really is. I mean, I'm bringing 900 and some odd supporters that have endorsed me, if that's the question you're asking, who do I bring to this table? And I think that I'm humbled by their signatures to endorse me, and they are entrusting me to do the good work of the district. And I will, if given the opportunity to, to be on the board, I will be communicating with them, and I will be informing them and asking them for their input.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Mandeville, whose interests should matter in the governance of a school district, and in what ways should they matter?
Well, while governing a school district, the interests of the entire community should matter, and there's particular interests within that community, but they are all interconnected. Because as I said earlier, education is foundational for the larger community, in my opinion. Who, in particular, the students' interests should matter, because that's what an educational system is all about. It is all about educating the students to become mature adults in a community. And then, along with the, the students are within families and caregivers, so the, for the parents and families and caregivers, the school schedule affects entire families. So, those interests need to be taken into consideration. And then, there's all the, the teachers, the administrators, the staff, and the school board, the, the people who are working with the students to provide that education, their interests obviously need to be taken into consideration. And because the, the adults of a school community should have work satisfaction, it should be structured in such a way that their work is satisfying. And if their work, if, if the governance of the school district creates adults who have satisfactory, satisfaction in their work, that will affect how well they educate their students and how well they interact with the entire community. And then, again, back to the entire community, because education affects the entire community, and the cost of education affects the entire community. So, it's, the entire community's interests should matter, and different sections of the community, their interests matter in different ways.
Thank you. Ms. Healy, as a school board member, from whom will you seek advice or input in weighing key decisions? And how will you go about accessing these individuals or groups?
I think the answer to that probably depends on the issue, what the key decision is. For example, there was a recent key decision made on board policy concerning transgender students and their rights in the schools, and how the schools might need to accommodate some of those things. And in that case, I would have to hear from the students, as the board did, for example, they testified, and Teresa Gregory, who was the advisor to a student group, and a, a social worker, a high school social worker, the middle school social worker, probably, probably the principals at the schools at those two levels for that issue. But for some larger legal policy issues, then I think it's not incumbent to, to ask the students and their families, or the advisor of a student group so much as it is to ask the Idaho School Boards Association and attorney, some other school boards maybe, because the issue is, is different. If the issue were somehow related to the governance of a board and how the board interacts with some other parts of the structure of the school board, maybe it would be useful to inquire of other school boards in Southern Idaho, how they solve this problem, how they deal with, with this issue. So, I, I think it depends on what the key decision would be, whose advice I would seek. And advice is, advice is different from input. Input can certainly come at any time from the voters and the taxpayers, and I distinguish- And I distinguish between those two, by the way, because I think the property taxpayers are not, are probably voters, but I think there are voters in our county who don't own property. And so I would, we would have to have some input from the voters and taxpayers and input from parents and teachers, depending on the issue. And I would prefer to hear that, as I said earlier, in a structured way where the board asks people specific questions to come forward and respond to the specific issue, not just in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Johnny, please explain how a board-
Yes, ma'am.
Please explain how a board knows if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out. What actions should the board take if the goals and policies are not being carried out?
Well, I think you all know the answer to that one. You can tell by the letters in the local paper if you're happy or unhappy with how the school board is taking care of business. The reality is, is that you're going to get feedback, albeit in many forms. Whether you have that casual conversation when you're in the supermarket with a stakeholder, you basically go about your day-to-day business in the workplace where you are located, you're going to get feedback. You'll know right away if people in the community are happy with the things you're doing. I think that you, as school board members, have experienced that on a regular basis. It's obvious in the newspaper that there are lots of letters written, commentary written concerning how you're doing your job. What actions should you take if the goals and the policies are not being carried out? Well, again, if you do make a decision as a school board to implement a policy and you don't see it being taken care of, the raise the question as to why the policy isn't being put in place, why the policy isn't being executed, and to that end, are there any consequences? Johnny, we're losing you a little bit.
Johnny, we're having a hard time hearing you. Can you hear us? Okay, we're going to keep going.
I'll try and call back.
Yeah, there you go.
Sid will try to call back.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Thea, please describe the qualities and behaviors that board members should exhibit.
That's a good question. I think first and foremost professionalism. You need to be a team player. You need to be a united front and stand behind decisions made. Unless, you know, you find that the policies are not working and then you can maybe shift maybe some of that policy, but that's as a team player with the board. You need to be creative and you need to think outside the box. You need to believe in the democratic process. You need to be committed and open-minded. You need to reach out and communicate well. You need to try to be a consensus builder. And I think you need to have the passion for educating our children at the highest level that they should be privileged to have. So you need to firmly believe in your work and why you're here doing what you're doing. And you need to be a great spokesperson for that position.
Thank you. Ms. Mandeville, how will you build consensus and support? Let's try that again. How will you build consensus and support in the community around the work of the school district and who will you bring to the table?
For building consensus and support, again, it comes back to communication, which I've mentioned a number of times. I mean, education is all about communication. We, what we communicate to our students, what we, how we listen to our students. So again, it's probably all of these involve communication, which also then is listening to our community. But it's educating the community on the purposes of the school district, how the school district is going about its business and the means and ends of the school district. It's, I don't have a page number, but in, again, in the Essential Board Book, it, some places in here it says it's impossible to over-communicate with all of the stakeholders within the community. And if I were the next trustee, I'd first talk to the fellow board members, like, well, what's working now? And then collaborate with them, like, what can work better in the future? But it's, it comes down to communication and respect and educating the community as to what a school district is doing and why and measurable outcomes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Healy, whose interests should matter in the governance of a school district and in what ways should they matter?
I find that difficult because you used the word governance and I'd certainly, the students' interests should matter for something, although I'm not sure the students' interests matter in governance as much as curriculum choices, how they're evaluated. It's, I'm not sure their interests are elevated to the level of how the board works with the administration, but certainly it's students' input. And then, on the opposite hand, the governance of a school district is largely regulated by state and federal laws, so we have to admit to those interests, although they're not the most interesting or the most local or the most useful to us, but nevertheless, school boards have to deal with that. And then I would say, first of all, because this is a public organization, the interests that matter most in the governance of the school district are the voters and the taxpayers. And perhaps the voters more than the taxpayers because, as I said before, there are some voters in the county who do not own property and who still have a stake in the schools and in what public agencies do. So they certainly matter in the governance of the school district. The teachers are voters and taxpayers. The teachers' interests may not be so much in governance as in curriculum, student development, student outcomes and so forth. I'm working around that word governance right there. But the reason, the ways in which they should matter should be kind of distinguished. It's different, I think, for the board to hear from voters and taxpayers on some issue than to hear from teachers on some other issues. Or as you hear public comments, if students, I think there is a student, report a student question on the student dress code coming up in the policy committee. I think that's a little bit different than the state requiring a certain kind of decision-making in some kind of process. So it matters in different ways for different subjects without giving more weight to one or the other, except that they cover different areas.
Johnny, are you with us?
Uh-oh.
Okay, we'll come back to him. Ms. Thea, how will you, skip ahead, how will you promote collaboration and partnership between the board and district leadership?
I don't think this is any different than how you'll, you know, build consensus and support. I think promoting collaboration is reaching out and communicating well and seeking, trying to seek consensus and being a good listener and being humble about your opinions. You may have strong opinions, but, you know, it's not the only one out there. And so listening really well to the experience of others. District leadership has very specific roles that you want to understand and you want to absolutely work in collaboration with. And consensus building through careful, respectful communication often and at every opportunity is critical. Obviously, if a board is to be successful and if a school district is to have the very best potential for that district, you have to have solid collaboration and partnership across the board and district leadership. You have to be a team and work together and support one another and believe in one another and respect your differences of opinion. You're never going to please everybody all the time and you're not going to always get your opinion to be the way that the board or leadership goes. But, you know, standing firmly in the democratic process and really reaching out and respecting one another and seeking that collaboration at every opportunity is critical, critical to the functioning of a high-functioning board and a high-functioning school district. And I know that that can be attained.
Thank you. I want to check in with Johnny and see if he's back with us. Are you there, Johnny? Ms. Mandeville, please explain how a board knows if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out. What actions should the board take if goals and policies are not being carried out?
First of all, I realize-
Oh, you're there.
Be back.
Actually, we're going to let Ms. Mandeville answer this question and then we're going to come back to you. Is that all right?
Oh, yeah, I'm standing by.
Okay, thank you.
Well, first of all, I realize I forgot to answer part of the last question or the second question of the last round and who, which was, who do I bring to the table along with the, how do you build consensus and support within the community? So, you know, who I bring to the table, I guess, you know, everybody I already know and everybody I will know in the community, through having students in the district for nine years, all the people I've worked with there, my husband's business. Anyway, I just want to acknowledge, I forgot to answer that question. And like Ms. Thea, I kind of don't fully get it. Anyway, I forgot to answer that part. And this question is how a board knows if its goals are being accomplished and policies carried out and what actions to take if not. Well, first of all, that premises, it presupposes that the board has goals. And so setting the board goals is setting appropriate goals to begin with, and the board has many goals now. Well, what I found, one thing I found interesting, again, keep bringing up this, you know, Essential School Board Book, everybody who's interested in the school board and the school district and what a school board does and how it functions, I, everybody watching and listening, I highly recommend this book. I mean, this is a really good book. I finished it recently. I got kind of teary-eyed at the end, to be perfectly honest, because it displays what a school board can be. I mean, and I firmly believe that this school board and whoever's in the fifth seat can definitely become a high-functioning school board that this describes. So in this book talks about knowing what data to ask for and how to assess that data. So having metrics for assessment and understanding data-proven strategies for meeting goals and assessing whether or not those goals are being met. And if they're not, you know, if the board says, here's our goals, here's our metrics for assessment, well, it doesn't look like they're being met. And it's like, well, then how do we reassess and is the goal good? How do we assess how we're going to accomplish the goal?
Thank you. Okay, Johnny.
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to come back to your question. As a school board member, from whom will you seek advice or input in weighing key decisions? How will you go about accessing these individuals or groups?
Ah, that's easy. Obviously, my wife would be the person that I would seek advice from. She tells me what to do in all cases. You know, it's one of those things. I think that, you know, again, in our small community, we have interaction with lots of different people. Some are stakeholders, some are basically just members of the community. You're going to get input whether you want it or not. However, the groups that we need to talk to sometimes aren't the ones that are going to step forward. I think that might point to some of the community members that don't voice their opinions. Those are the ones that you really need to reach out to. I think Rob has done very well with the fact that he has his coffee meetings where he'll have folks come in and have a conversation with them to get their views. And those people that come in, I would imagine, to those informal meetings are the ones that really go to the board meetings, won't provide public comment. So I think that's a good way of reaching out to the members in the community to get their opinions and to seek their advice when weighing these key discussions. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, very welcome. Good to be back.
Okay. Ms. Healy, please describe the qualities and behaviors that board members should exhibit.
I think in terms of qualities, board members should have, should not have preformed ideas, should be open to all kinds of possibilities, to learning all kinds of things. I think board members should be curious about how things work because board members are amateurs. They can't possibly know all the details of all the things that have to go on in school administration and school law and so forth. And I think most importantly, in a way, school board members have to be patient. I think they have to take the long view of what kinds of changes can be made and how student growth will develop over time and think in terms of the financial plan for the next five years, looking at student growth over the next five years, looking at where English language learners and the dual immersion program, how they will integrate over the next five or 10 years. And if there are some changes being contemplated, they're not changes that are going to take full effect next year probably, or we won't see the measures of their effectiveness next year. But I think the patience is, as I've said to some people when I was working, teaching about changing programs and changing the ways things are done in schools, it's like planting trees. You don't get shade the first year or the second year. You get pleasant shade in a lovely tree the third, fourth, or the fifth year. And I think that's what the board does more than what the staff does. I think board members can be helpful and critical. Teachers do that, kind of at the same time, critical but helpful. You got it wrong, but I'll help you, or you didn't understand that, but I'll help you. I think that's an important quality for board members to have. I think that board members need to be ready to read and to ask a lot of questions, to not read and accept, but read and inquire. And behaviors should be, should involve asking questions, but not in a challenging way, in a way that says, I want to understand this, I want to know how this works. As I said before, a curious way. And I also think that because of the long view, board members need to follow up, follow through and ask questions about, we discussed this last year, where did it go? Can we go back to it again and revisit to see how we're doing in terms of community outreach, reaching students at all levels, integrating information from our teachers, collaborating with the administration, whatever it is, but follow up, follow through, go back again and go over it once more to review it. Thanks.
Thank you. Johnny.
Yes, ma'am.
How will you build consensus and support in the community around the work of the school district and who do you bring to the table?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? There was some coughing in the background.
Oh, sure. How will you build consensus and support in the community around the work of the school district and who do you bring with you to the table?
Well, building consensus and support in the community, I guess to basically get down to the rock bottom of it, it's if we basically perform as the community wishes us to go forward with, then we build consensus. If we go in a direction- If we go in a direction that is divergent from the thoughts and the wishes of the community, we will build a consensus. To get people behind you, you have to support their ideas and what they feel is the best for their children. I mean, at the end of the day, what are we talking about here? It's like, we have parents who are concerned about their children. And if we don't listen to those parents about the concerns of their children, well, they're not going to get behind us. They're not going to support us. So, what we need to do is we need to be mindful of those parents and those students and how they are affected by the decisions that we make. That's how you build consensus, is that you basically move forward with the wishes of your stakeholders. As far as bringing, or who am I going to bring to the table? Obviously, again, I'm sure I'm going to get a lot of input from my bride. That's always been the case. But again, my wife has been on the PTA since my son was in kindergarten. She served in the elementary school, she served in middle school, she currently serves in the high school. She basically had a good grasp of what goes on within those places. And she has a wealth of communication with other parents, other stakeholders. And consequently, she fills me in on all of that because it's very helpful to understand what those views are. So, regarding of who I would bring to the table, I would say that I would bring those people that are involved in the parent-teacher association. That information that I would garner from my wife, I would also bring to the table and in all of those stakeholders, students, teachers, members of the community that wish to offer up any advice or support of the policies that we put in place. I think that's basically it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Thea. Whose interests should matter in the governance of a school district and in what ways should they matter?
So, since our schools exist to serve the educational needs of every student and taxpayers' money provides the financial backing for the public schools, I think almost everybody in this community matters. There may be a few people that don't provide taxpayer money, that don't have children, that may not think they're interested in what goes on here. But I think that students, teachers, parents, administrators, staff, taxpayers, and voters, all should, you know, their interests should matter in how our school district is governed. And I think that there may be slightly different ways that they matter depending on who, which community that I just listed is represented. But certainly, teachers to be inspiring the children and to be mentors, strong mentors, and to be providing opportunities for the kids to develop passion for learning and to be engaged citizens. The students for participating in their own learning and take ownership a little bit in their own learning. Certainly, the parents and taxpayers from a budgetary standpoint of where the money is spent and how it's spent and what the priorities are for the school district. And they should all have input. And, you know, like I said before, I think best school boards find ways to empower staff and provide positive, transparent, collaborative leadership for everybody, to engage everybody in our district to feel a part of how our school is governed. And certainly, some will find more interest in that than others, but it's our job to try to reach out to all those people because it does matter. They all have an important role to play. And I, I, you know, Irene had trouble with governance and I'm not sure I'm defining that in any real strict terms. I'm just sort of generally speaking how this school is generally run and are we meeting the needs of every student as best we can to the best of our abilities? So, I think everyone is, is really important and collaborating and engaging those community members are really, really key to success.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mandeville. As a school board member, from whom will you seek advice or input in weighing key decisions? How will you go about accessing these individuals or groups?
So, as far as seeking advice on key decisions, key decisions require expert advice. So, which expert at which time requires wisdom on the part of the trustees? So, it depends. Sorry, a little bit of a brain fade there. So, yeah, it's definitely, key decisions do require expert advice. There are probably various stakeholders in our own community, our experts on various aspects of school running and being a school board. Recently during, when you had the, your executive session a couple of weeks ago, I had a really interesting conversation with an administrator and they're talking about that the academic school year goes through a cycle, you know, that you, you need to do certain things at a certain time to get the result you want when you want it. And if you wait too long, you're, you've just put yourself out a whole year. And I found it interesting that it sounded very much like the agricultural cycle, that you have to plant at a certain time, do certain things, nurture your crops at the right time, harvest at the right time so that you won't be hungry in the winter. So, seeking advice on key decisions is understanding the decision and understanding which expert to seek the advice from. And as far as accessing these individuals or groups, there are tried and true methods on how to go about communicating and it's, it's again, communication, which is listening, it's, you know, through finding either through studies or through experts in the community. You know, there's in-person, there's emails, there's research, all sorts of ways to access the individuals and groups. It's, the key though, is to know which expert for which key decision to seek advice from.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Healy, you have our final question tonight. How will you promote collaboration and partnership between the board and district leadership?
I'm going to take the position that that kind of thing is done with expert steps and almost professional advice. And I think it's very good to say, we will collaborate, we will be partners, we will learn to operate with each other. And I think, but I think that at some level, it needs to be structured. And, and part of the structure is a practice that I use working on some departments and committees at the high school, which is the first step is to identify the problem. The first step is for people to say exactly what the problem is and why it is a problem. And then probably for the board first to discuss it, that in some event like a retreat, and I'm not totally confident that I understand how private retreats are, how much public notice has to be given, who can be present and how, but the public's role is in those things. But at some point, a non-policy-making, non-voting meeting called a retreat with a specific purpose of examining the board's internal functions. And then inside that, some kind of structured development of steps and ideas. We agree we're going to do this, we agree we're going to talk about this, we agree we're not going to do that. Maybe there's a facilitator, I'm not sure. And, but the question, there's, there would be questions, what do we agree on, what are our common goals, what do we object to, what do we agree on and we all object to maybe? What will each of us agree to do, what will each of us agree to not do for the board with respect to the administration? So, I'd rather not just talk about the possibility of collaboration or encourage collaboration, but maybe do some kind of structured formal creation of the process for collaboration and discussion. And then, and then revisit a theme, then do an evaluation and analysis of how will that work? Possibly at intervals of every three or four months for the board to go back and say, well, how are we doing? How is this going, what should we be doing next? Can we check off some things on our collaboration with administration list? And then obviously, at some point, it will be important for the board, having gotten to some kind of point about what they're going to do, what they're not going to do, what they're going to accept, if they're not going to accept, probably to interact with some administrators and say, is this working? It's a continuous process of evaluation, self-evaluation, analysis. And from what I've read, Ellen and I shared that book, when I've, what I've, from what I've read, boards do it in a structured, formal way. They don't just hope it will happen, they don't, of course, you can't. They can't call each other and talk about collaboration. They make it happen in a formalized way. And so, that's what I would propose for, for increasing and maintaining collaboration and partnership between the board and the administrator.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board or from the applicants at this time?
I have one question for the candidates. Mind if I ask it? Thank you. So, I'd like each to answer this question. I would like to know, well, first of all, you're all, as prospective governors of the school district, the ultimate responsibility that we have as a board are making decisions. And I would like to know from each of you, first of all, your ability to make decisions in a timely fashion. I'd like you to describe that. And I would like you to describe also your methodology for making decisions that are of critical importance to the entire district. Is that simple enough for everybody?
Go the same order, start with Johnny, do it that way.
Sure. Johnny?
Do you hear that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did you hear the question okay?
I think so. I think Rob wanted to know, again, if we would be decisive in making a decision. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, let's put it this way. We're making decisions sometimes with little or no time to consider the consequences. And the consequences being very grave, my ship, my cargo, my crew in a position where I had to basically read, react, and then make a decision. And again, to keep my, my ship, cargo, and crew out of harm's way. So, as far as being decisive, and I think I've mentioned this in public comment to you all, I don't have any issues with being decisive. I've been doing it all my life. I understand that you have to be decisive, you have to take a position, and you have to make a decision. Hopefully, with the input that you've received, you make the correct decision and the ship, cargo, and crew continues to move forward rather than be involved in something tragic. Is that what you're looking for, Rob?
Yeah, I think that's part of it. And then the other part was I was just looking for, you know, what your methodology and decision making is. And, and the other part, you said you can make them, but I mean, how, are you capable of making the hard decision in a timely fashion? That's really what I'm looking for.
Oh, yeah. I know how to make a hard decision in a timely fashion. Like I said, I've done that many times. As far as what the methodology is of making that decision, obviously, you look at the, basically, the information that is in front of you at the time that you need to make that decision. Sometimes you don't have the opportunity to spend a large period of time before you make a decision. I don't think any of the decisions that you make come at a critical short period. I think that you're given enough time to look over the information that you have in front of you so that you can make a well-informed decision. I've had the opportunities to make decisions based on, and again, with small amounts of information. And I'm happy to say that in most of those cases, if not all of those cases, I've been successful. So, again, my methodology would be to take in anything that's available to me, process it as quickly as possible, and then render a decision. Is that basically what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Well...
I think in order to make decisions, you have to be prepared, you have to be informed, you have to be ready. Whatever material that you need to make that decision, you have to be prepared for. So, I've had to make a lot of decisions in my career. Endangered species work that I did was pretty high-level, lots of decisions, working with private and public land managers to make lots of decisions. I also led wilderness trips and had to make five-mile crossings with 10 kids following me and had to make decisions, pea soup bog or not, you know? I'm not afraid to make decisions. I feel like I have the skills to make sound decisions. I'm rational. I will seek the necessary information I need. I think you also have to realize what certain decisions need more time and other decisions may not be so consequential and can happen more quickly. And you have to be a good judge of that, those kinds of things. And I feel like I'm a good judge of that, both, you know, from being a parent and, and being a professional person in, you know, for the last 30 years of my life. And I'm sorry, what was the second part that I might be missing to answer your question?
No, you got most of it. You got it. I was looking for methodology and effectiveness and...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not afraid and I will do the research, I will listen, I will, I, I'm not afraid to make a decision. And, you know, we also should know that not every decision has to stand forever too. I mean, sometimes you can acknowledge that maybe, you know, because of time and experience and what's going on in lives today, it might be, one decision today might be a slightly decision, different decision 20 years ago, 10 years down the road. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not afraid of it, I know how to do it, I balance things, I am prepared. Yeah.
Thanks.
As far as making decisions and how to do it in a timely fashion, the methodology, well, Ms. Thea, you stole my thunder with be prepared. That's the, the Girl Scout motto, be prepared. We were scouting family. You know, to, as far as being a trustee, I mean, you've got to do the homework ahead of time. You've got to get that packet and read through it. But before that, there's a, the Idaho State Board Association is having training next week. If I become the trustee, I absolutely want to go to that training. So, you need to be well-prepared, you have to have researched and educated ahead of time on just the governance of, of schools. And it's the, being prepared for lots of different, being educated and prepared helps to make a decision in a timely fashion. And to have, it's interesting that Johnny mentioned being the merchant marine. My husband and I lived on a sailboat for eight years. And the key to crossing an ocean safely, we crossed from Cabo San Lucas to New Zealand and traveled through the South Pacific Islands. The key to doing that safely is preparation, well, being well-prepared ahead of time and so that when those, those quick decisions come, you're ready because you've done your preparation. And for being a trustee, you would require research, education, training, and when you've done that kind of homework and then a homework with each board packet ahead of time, then you can make a decision quickly. You know, the methodology comes back to research, being, having done the research, having done that education, having gotten the expert advice, getting as much information as possible to make the best decision possible.
Thank you.
I'm the fourth person. What can I add? Except for what kind of ice cream to have after dinner, which is basically a stab. What they've said is, right, you weigh all the options, consider all the information, get more information as needed, be prepared. And, but I can, I think part of, another thing to add would be who will be affected and how, because that's the business we're in. It's not, this is not, we're not talking about decisions about whether to manufacture more black shoes or more brown shoes in order to make more profit. We're talking... as a result of things we said earlier, how to explain it. How to explain the decision that was made to the public, rather than just say, "I analyzed the data, and I shot this way. I went this way." I think there needs to be a more reasonable approach. And public, agency, board members need to be able to explain their choice and the reasons why they made their choice. Not that everybody will agree, but that there is an explanation. So I would add that to what others said.
Thank you.
Ms. Thea, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I want to know two or three qualities that you guys are looking for in this board position. I'm curious. Now's your turn.
Can I make a comment?
I was just going to ask the rest of our board that some of this responsibility resides
with us to be able to talk about that first. And so I'm glad that you brought that up, because I was going to bring it up. I think part of the responsibility is on us. I'll kick it off and tell, and the other thing is, there's no right answer here. It's a multi-dimensional answer, which is what, why we have various people on the board. So it's not an either-or, which is the beauty of having more than one person give an answer to that. So my, who I'm looking for is someone, in addition to all of these amazing answers that I've gotten here, which have, I just admire everyone's answers on the spot to every single one of these tough questions. Boy, oh, boy. Who I'm looking, what I'm looking for is primarily someone who understands two things: the proper role of a school board member vis-à-vis the community they serve, and second, an understanding of the proper role of a school board member vis-à-vis the school district And I, this has kind of been behind everything that I've done. And there was a chart, an organizational chart, that existed until the year 2000 that had patrons on the top of the school organizational chart. And then the next year, the patrons disappeared from the chart, and it's been that way ever since. So that concerns me. And so I feel like that's something that I'm looking for, is a board member who clearly understands the right chart, which is this chart. We are funded by the patrons. We represent the values and visions of the patrons. So that's what I'm looking for.
Why was it removed?
Further discussion. Another answer from the board?
Would you like an answer from all of us?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking for someone who is definitely collegial, someone who is capable of working with every individual within the team, someone who understands the principle of team, somebody who is willing to debate and not shy from debate, and looking for people who are willing to, when they don't have their way, that they're accepting of that, and when they have their way, they're accepting of that, too, and they don't gloat. It's like, you want to be real even keel. And I'm looking for those, the kind of person who also is really intelligent and understands education, and understands the value of education, and what the huge responsibility it is to be sitting at this table, because it's not to be taken lightly. There you go.
I think for me personally, I see the board is a very polarized board right now. I see the district is a very polarized, pardon me one second. Excuse me. I see the district is a very polarized district. I'm looking for a person who's able to do the research, to have an independent mind, to be able to take the information at hand and listen to the constituency, but be able to make a decision without, oh. I'm not looking for a person who's tied to one side or the other. I'm looking for a person who's neutral, who's an open communicator, who can help unify our board.
Values that I'm looking for would be essentially just rather straightforward, just straightforward, open-minded, and a critical thinker, who really thinks critically about what is in front of us and both sides of what those issues are, or well, all sides, because sometimes it's not one side or the other, but it's multifaceted. That's something important to me.
Trustee Corcoran.
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask, to answer that in one other way. Critical thinking, I think, is top on the list for me, too. And I know you mentioned taking the information at hand, and I would go one step further, and I would be looking for someone who would be able to do independent research, bring that back to the table. There's a book that I gave out to the board. This was about maybe a year or so ago. It was called Wiser: How to Make Better Decisions. And it talked about how important it is to have unique information come to the board so that the board is able to learn from each other, and so there's not a lot of group thinking going on. And that's where critical thinking comes in, and independent research comes in. And I really liked, someone said something about the expertise, and I think it was Ellen who said something about different areas of expertise.
That might have been the strengths-based leadership.
Right. And I think that that's, that should be honored. And I think that that has a role to play.
So, further questions? Ms. Mannivale.
I mentioned that there's the state school board training next week. I mean, if somebody is appointed tonight, is there still time to register for that?
Yes, there is. Trustee Corcoran.
So this is the quintessential question that comes up every single time. What are your time commitments? And how much time do you have to devote to the position?
Ms. Healy, do you want to start this one off?
I have plenty of time for this position. And if I don't seem to have time, I would make time for this position, because I would be committed to finding out, learning, asking the questions, being curious, and also developing strategies and plans, as I said, for collaboration and communication, rather than just say, "I would like it to happen." I would like to suggest strategies, plans, and structures to make that kind of thing happen. So I have time.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this was discussed last time as well. So I, my time commitments are, I run, I've got two children, I run a family, I'm in an online master's degree, and part of my decision on whether or not to apply for this volunteer job was whether or not I had the time. And I looked at my weekly schedule, and I said, you know, I have this block of time, this block of time for this activity, this block of time for this activity. And I decided I had several, you know, three to four hours a day, you know, five days a week, if maybe more, to devote to this volunteer job. And then along with that, the various evening meetings. So before I decide, made the final decision to apply, I assessed my schedule and decided, and I asked, I asked some former board members. I called them and said, "How much time did it require of you per week, per month, on average?" And I got the feedback that it was approximately 10 to 15 on some months, 15 to 20 on others per month. And then on the weeks that we have, you have meetings, it's going to be more hours that particular week. So I took that information into account and assessed whether or not I had the time. And I decided, yes, I do have the time.
Thank you.
I like to be busy. I don't like to not have projects going in my life. And I do have a couple of jobs. One is possibly winding down at this moment. They're both not full-time. I am a parent of an eighth grader, and I, if my husband is listening at home, he'll laugh, but my motto is, "Sleep when you're dead." You know, if I, if I didn't think I could put out the time needed, which includes some development, too, because I, while I've been on school boards, and I've been on lots of committees, and been part of lots of organizations that had strategic planning, and conferences, and all kinds of stuff, I mean, if I didn't think I could really commit, I wouldn't be here today. I don't know what the exact hours are. I also got that general information, and I'm fully prepared to put that time in. I wouldn't be here if I wasn't committed, and know that it takes additional research, sometimes some development, hopefully, and, yeah. And it's of value, so that's important.
Okay, Johnny?
I basically have two speeds, on and off, whether you are out of the country. I basically make time for the things that are important, understand how to, how should I say, consolidate my day, use the time wisely. I'm task-oriented and anal-retentive, so consequently, I don't have any problems basically getting things done. I don't see any problem with it at all.
Johnny?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one quick question. Obviously, you're calling us from Dubai. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but how long are you away from the country?
Well, normally, when I go, it's usually six weeks at a time. And depending on how the rotation goes forward, I may be home for six weeks, I may be home for 12 weeks. Again, I don't see that as being an issue. I possibly could miss one meeting where I'm not in attendance, as opposed to being online, as we are here. Going forward, if necessary, rather than using the Internet to call in, I could get myself a phone plan where I can use my own phone, and then I have a clear and concise connection.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right. If there's no further questions, we'll go ahead and move straight into the decision portion of the meeting. Trustee Corcoran.
So I have a question. I am wondering, before we've handled it in a way where we've just started banging away on making motions, and after the last time, I felt strongly that that slighted a couple of members who had put their names forward. And I was thinking about how we could do it differently, where we discussed together all of the members, and then, taking that information as a group, we could, at that point, make motions, but, so that no one was ignored to put out what we thought about the pluses and the minuses and whatever about each person. I feel like there's been an awful lot of preparation done on the part of four extraordinary individuals, and I think that that would be a way to honor that. I know it's a different way than we handled it last time.
I am not opposed to that.
I'm not really getting, I didn't get it. Like, we had a protocol, and now we're proposing a different protocol at the juncture of decision-making. Can you help me understand that?
Sure, sure. So, so to just go through and, as a board, discuss the, all of the members, to give them all a fair shake in terms of, you know, all of the pluses, and possibly some questions that we might have about the various board members. So just discuss it together as a group, so everyone gets a fair and public hearing, and then to start to make motions based on that group deliberation.
I think I get it.
Because two board member, two candidates last time were not really given that respect, and I took that to heart.
Yes, I understand that aspect, yes. Because I think that the procedure, if I'm not mistaken, has to be motion, second vote.
Right.
Right? So if we have to do motion, second vote, I think what we just experienced was what you just asked for.
Yep.
Like, everyone's had a very good opportunity to speak to us as a group, and I think to dissect or rank everybody in a format post that discussion is, I think, what you're proposing, basically.
Yes.
And I think that's really a challenge, because at some point, we're going to have to vote. And so when we have a consensus on a vote with one individual, then the rest of the people are no longer in the conversation.
Right.
So I'm not getting the purpose of what you propose.
The purpose is so that we are able to discuss all candidates. And so I, my motion would be to, for exactly that, to discuss all candidates as a group, and then that would be my first motion.
I was going to, I was going to say, the discussion, as far as I understand correctly, that discussion wouldn't need a motion?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was going to say, so, from my point of view, and I could be wrong, I think there's, can be some discussion about the candidates, and then a motion, second discussion, and then vote. I think that's the one key piece you were missing. Trustee Clayton, is when you made that statement, it's, there's always just, open for discussion after a motion is made and seconded.
That I do understand, which I would encourage, right? But if we want to talk about all of them while they sit there, we're, let's go. I'm fine.
Yeah.
That's what we're going to do.
Right, exactly.
So, start it out. Let's go.
So no one gets ignored, you know, down the road. So I don't know, I don't mean to be driving this.
No, I'm fine with that. And do you have any points of discussion?
Well, I think everybody has some tremendous positives, and I am very impressed. And I said that before, and some people said, "Oh, how could you say that?" Well, I am very impressed, and I want to put that out there. I think I'm impressed for different reasons, for different people. And I think that there are some, some challenges for, for putting it through the lens of what's important to me, what's important to you, what's important to you, what's important to you. So, so if we kick it off, and I, in no particular order, the first, I've got, I've got notes on everyone, actually. And what I did was, because we have a huge amount of information about all of you, whether through your letters to us, your actions in the community, your letters, your public letters, it's really, you know, you participate, all of you, and that's, you didn't come out of the woodwork, which is amazing. We've had situations like that in the past, and we haven't done a good job on choosing people. So this is, we've got a lot of good, good information. So I think I'll start with Johnny. I'll go right to left.
So is Johnny.
Oh, so we're going to evaluate each individual?
I want to put, I want to put what I think.
You're going to come with your evaluation of each of them?
Well, I'm going to say what I think are the positives.
Okay.
Yeah. And if there's problems, I'm going to say what I think the issues are.
Great.
And this is through the lens of what I particularly have put out there as seeing, as thinking about what is the important part of being a board member. And that was, in my case, two things: understanding the board-community relationship, the hierarchy there, and the board administrative relationship. So that's the lens I see it. So, that's the lens I see it. So let me go back and see what I put about Johnny. So Johnny, you have, when I went and looked you up, you had written something in the paper December 9th and you said, "School Board Actions Were Disappointing." You said, "I've said before transparency at all times is vital," and in this interest, instance, you have failed. The tenure of the last few superintendents has been a case of the tail wagging the dog. I was hopeful that the current board, you would be the leader rather than the follower. Also tonight, you said a lot of other things that I was trying to highlight, there was so much information that came out of us that I really wanted to highlight. I, I think your experience traveling around the world was amazing, your collaboration that, to include the public, came off loud and clear. The fact that you know from letters and feedback, casual conversations, things like that, you've got your pulse on the community, that Sue is involved in your, in your, and she's got her ear to the ground. And then, the, one of the things that I thought you said was most important and pertinent was, "If we perform as the community wishes, we will naturally form consensus." I thought that that was a great answer. So those are my, my comments about that. You also appeared before the board in June, I went back and I looked at your three-minute speech and it was, I can relay exactly here, you said, "With regards to the current cuts to the budget, all of these items directly impact the most important part of the school district, thus students." And you're very, very clear and very strong on that and I watched your body language. So that's the, that's, that was my, that's my input on, on, I think that you're very strong on that. I'm gonna go to Kaz next, just right to left. So, Kaz, I think, you know, I'm oppressed, obviously, with the fact that you have overwhelming community support. That takes a lot of, of, of organization and group input, just like it took for Irene. I think that your first answer in the last meeting about what, the purpose of education aligning with the values of our community was really good. I love the way you talk about exploration. That's an outside the book, outside the box word that I think doesn't fit into the normal techno-speak, so I like, I like to hear that. There was a bunch of things on here. You said, you talked about, again and again, you talked about active engaged participation, about innovative ideas. You talked about, everyone needed to be included, communication needed, engaged citizenry is critical, two-way community meetings. This, you said, "The community is only as vital as its school district." You said, I mean, in every answer, you said, "You're listening to the community." You're saying, oops, here we go, having humble opinions but listening. Everybody matters, taxpayers and owners, engaging everyone. So that's, that, you know, fits into putting the patrons back into the equation, in my Ellen, there was, I've known you for, you know, since 2013, off and on, but I knew you in 2013 as being the person who started BlaineParents.org, which was the first online forum for community engagement in education. So I really respect your interest in trying to get a forum out there for the community. Let's see here. I liked on your, on your site, you said, "We're parents of the Blaine County School District students, we are involved and interested in our children's education." You have several times talked about fostering a sense of civic responsibility, which I think is really important. I like the way that you were looking, you've educated yourself, you're obviously a lifelong learner, you're looking at strengths-based leadership, you said more than one time the importance about being respectful, you get unique, getting unique information from experts and informed community members and bringing that back to the board. I liked all of that. So, I think, you know, I think that you understand putting patrons into the equation and I think that you're an articulate spokesperson for that. And Ms. Healy, I think that you are, I've gotten some fabulous input about your abilities as a teacher and there was several answers that I liked about building consensus, about having a clear statement of goals. I think that that's extremely important. That's something that our, our board has not done and it's something that is a big, I think, failing of our board and that I totally support. The only, the part that I was questioning, which I wanted to hear and I kept listening for, was I really want to hear more, the, the public put in there more, I hear teachers and principals a lot. I hear, I hear governance, you know, needs to be done with administration and board I hear, this was another comment, "To improve schools," so the administration needs asked, questions have to be asked of administrators. I like the fact that you are in tune with a whole bunch of people in the school and you mentioned custodians more than once in terms of that being the entire spectrum. I think that that's, you know, something that we often overlook, so I liked to hear about that. In terms of, board members are amateurs. So, they are in one sense, they are amateurs in terms of the way that the, that, that school districts, I think, are run on the ground, but they are not amateurs in terms of knowing patron involvement. That's where they're the experts. And so I, I feel as a board member that that's something that I'd like to have a little credit for. Because I, I think that we, that's, that is where our expertise lies and in fact, that's what we should be doing, otherwise, what's our purpose? I have received, so then in terms of what, you know, what has been your contribution to my knowledge, I've seen in the paper in December, you wrote an op-ed, you have communicated with me personally. That communication has been interesting. I've had a hard time with that communication and it hit me on a personal level because it was, I felt a bit disparaging of my proposals to the administration budget and I felt like school board members, it's their job to have not only input on the school budget, but to be driving the process in terms of the vision and values of the community. So that was difficult for me to hear, that I pulled ideas off the top of my head, which was the language that was used, when in fact, I used a lot of data. And as Johnny would say, you know, ongoing community conversations, there were strong themes there that I included, whether it was Hispanic coordinator, you know, the, the communication department has been a sore subject amongst teachers in the community for a long time. Administrators, not to pit people against other people, that's something that's now on the table and I think a positive way and it's long overdue. And in terms of teachers, I've been getting a lot of positive feedback from that, saying thank you for, you know, that, getting that out. I know it was started on the part of a teacher. And then the fact that you said, "If I knew anything about the legislative process," I was hurt by that because I, I poured my time and energy in 2006 into helping this district get this budget stabilization. Well, it wasn't called the budget stabilization, but it was property tax funding in schools, without which we would have been destroyed as a school district. So, you described it as not, as the Idaho School Boards Association and things like that, that I didn't understand what their role was. And in fact, I did understand what their role was and I spoke to many, many legislators and they said that grassroots support was much more meaningful to them than paid.
I'm sorry, I gotta leave. I thought I came to see a school board meeting.
Excuse me. Gal, excuse me, sir, this is a public board meeting.
Oh. So that's my, so that's my input on, and I know that, you know, there was a lot there because you've provided a lot of information, so it's been, it has been helpful. And I think that looking at the, looking outside the school district for information helps in being a school board member too. So, that, those are all things. So, I wanted to say I appreciate everyone coming here and being, and having different aspects of pluses and input and strengths because you are a great group of people.
Further discussion by the board?
Yes. I would like to say thank you to all of you who showed up and put your names in the hat for this position. Thought you were all very well spoken, I thought you all answered the questions very well. And I respect you for being here and I have no admonishments for any of you in your movement to come before us, in, in any of your records of what you've done. I'm a firm believer in free speech and the press is a vehicle for that and if you choose to make statements, those statements, you should not be held accountable for, other than the fact that you made those statements. If they're not agreeable to my colleagues or people with this board, those are really not bones of contention that should be brought into this process. This process should be as democratic and fair as possible, that we select the best possible candidate. Irene, I appreciated many of your comments, I appreciated the fact that you brought to light the importance for some specificity in decision-making and seeking advice, I think that's critical. I think trying to please the entire world with every decision is probably not the most effective way to govern and lead. I think that you need to go to the people who are going to give you the most professional and solid advice to get that help. I appreciate also your addressing serious accusations out of the gate. I think the fact that you were called out on being cozy with administration and administration-friendly and so on and so forth, and in the newspapers and in the public eye, I think that that was pretty unfair because nowhere in the record of what we've transcribed through this process have you led or said anything that was specifically administrative friendly or giving them a special bone. So, thank you for addressing that. Negatives, I don't really have a lot of negatives on you. I think you're really well-prepared, I think you got the time and I think you really are committed to the improvement and the betterment of this school district 100%. So, I appreciate everything you've done and said. Ellen, thank you for your time and your commitment. I loved how you came out of the gate in your opening speech with, "There's a problem," you identified it, and you want to help solve it. I'm all about that, so thank you for that. That was really positive. Your negatives, you got lost a couple times in a couple of things, I'm okay with that too, right? I get, I'll probably get lost through this discourse as well. So, that, that's something we all have, it's okay. And I liked, I liked many of your answers to many of the questions. I thought you were well-prepared, the fact that you're collegial, out of the gate with one of your competitors for a position, one of the people you're looking, looking to have a position over and shared resources between the two of you, that already tells me that collegiality is not just a word that you're throwing, you've demonstrated it. So I appreciate that. So, thank you. Kaz, I think you're incredible. I think you have the greatest qualities of overarching community outreach and connection with the community. I worry a little bit that you may be spread too thin and you may try to please too many people all the time. This role is about not pleasing everybody all the time. You're gonna make people angry, people are gonna be disappointed with you, people are gonna have a hard time with you. You have to be prepared for that and you have to live with that. I mean, as my colleague here stated, she had some problems with some newspaper article that Irene wrote, I'm asking the superintendent for a job application today because that's the way the community perceives my role within this governance structure. I'm not really interested in getting a job here, right? I'm here to govern and help kids be the best they can be. So, everybody got that one, I'll share that with you. So, anyway, it's like, we all have those things, you just take it, right? Like, that's what you have to do. So I worry a little bit in your regard in that case. Like, I, I hope you're not a pleaser too much because we can't be pleasers all the time. We have to be leaders and leading is not necessarily pleasing and that's a bit where the loneliness comes from too. Or being out of, out of the mainstream. Because when you're in that kind of spot, people may not want to be around you, they may not want to talk to you, right? And that's, that's kind of how it gets lonely too. It may not just be through success, but making hard decisions, making calls is success. So that's my fear in you. Johnny, I think you were great. Are you still there?
Yes, sir, I'm sitting here.
All right. We, we went through that side of the table together. I respect you very much for your engagement with this process. I think that your answers were good. I think that I am concerned with you, with probably your travel schedule and your able, your ability to commit to the process. Unfortunately, I think that's going to be challenging for you. So, I'm not discrediting you in any way, I just think that that, that's a big obstacle. I value you, I hope you can be involved, I think that you should continue to be involved. I appreciate your candor, I appreciate your directness and I appreciate the fact that you don't shy away from issues and you bring them to the table. So, that's my evaluation of, of this group because we were asked to do that, so there you go.
Trustee Bustos?
Okay. Well, I thought all of the candidates interviewed very well. Everybody has strong points, strong concerns, valid concerns that I think we all as board members have and share. I really, you know, you know Johnny, I do worry about travel schedules, but I also know, we also have lives beyond school. So, and he's making it work. He's called in, you know, so that's a positive. You know, there's always a way around everything, I think, you know, there's always a way to make things work and I think that's what we're here about, to do, is to collaborate. Kaz, you know, strong points are, you know, farmer's market, that's something that, you know, and the mountain, you know, wanting to have outdoor education for the school, you know, things that I think our community really values and that you are a leader in those things within our community, I think is a strong point. Ellen, you know, you've been involved. I've seen you here at our board meetings, you know, so I know that you do care and you have concerns and you express them or there's praises, you know, we're hearing those. And Irene, you know, heard very positive things about your teaching career, you know, and you also have really great points about how we can do better as a board. So, you know, we all have positives. I don't like to dwell on a lot of negatives. There's enough negativity in this world and enough negativity in the media right now. I don't think I really need to push upon those things. I'm, I think that we just need to focus on what's positive and what we like the best out of all of our candidates that we have in front of us.
I would tend to agree with Trustee Bustos. I'm, I'm amazed at the preparation, the research that's been done, the, how active each of the applicants have been over the past, who knows how long. And I would tend to agree that I think we need to focus on the positives. There's always gonna be drawbacks, there's always gonna be negativity out there, but I think we really need to focus on the, on the positives. In my view, I do tend to worry a little bit about Johnny's ability. Having served on the board with a trustee... on the board with a trustee who was vacant a lot via, and had to phone in, it's difficult. It's doable, but it, it hinders the process. I truly think that we, as a board, need to come out of this meeting tonight with a decision. This is on us, as a board. It should not go beyond us. It should be based on what's best for our kids, it should be based on what's best for the community as a whole. And it should be based on, and we should be setting forth the ability to compromise and to search for the greater good for all of us. So, that's my two cents. With that, are there any motions?
I'll make a motion to nominate Irene Healy for Zone 3 vacancy.
I will second. Any discussion?
I think we've had a pretty thorough discussion.
I, I agree, but we, we have the option.
I'm a fan, I think she would be great.
We'll do a roll call vote, Trustee Bustos?
Nay.
Trustee Benyon? Aye. Trustee Corcoran?
Nay.
Trustee Clayton?
Aye.
Motion fails, two to two. Is there another motion on the table?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Kaz Thea for the position.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Trustee Bustos?
Aye.
Trustee Benyon?
Nay.
Trustee Corcoran?
Aye.
Trustee Clayton?
Nay.
Motion fails, two to two. Is there another motion on the table?
I'll make a motion to select Ellen Mandeville as the representative of Zone 3.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Trustee Bustos?
Aye.
Trustee Benyon?
Aye.
Trustee Corcoran?
Aye.
Trustee Clayton?
Aye.
Motion is carried, four to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Mandeville, welcome to the board. That being said, we would like to swear you in.
Right now?
On our next meeting, which will, and we'll have to admit, get that agenda amended. Johnny, we appreciate you joining us.
Thanks, Johnny.
Well, thank you. Johnny, are you still there?
Yes, ma'am, still here.
Yep. Well, we appreciate you calling in, I know it's way past the middle of the night.
But, we'll swear you in at our next regular meeting on Tuesday night, um, Ms. LaChance.
We're not adjourned yet, right?
We're not, I'm, I'm still discussing just one second.
One thing I would like to...
Can I, can I finish first?
Sure.
Ms. LaChance, would you make sure that she gets the board packet and all the pertinent information? And if she so chooses, get her in contact so we can get a hotel room and registration for ISBA.
Ready?
So, all right. Trustee Clayton?
I'd say thank you again to all four of you for participating in the process, and I hope that the three of you who weren't selected continue to stay and be engaged with us, because we really need you, because this is a big part of what was in the conversation, and I hope just because you were not selected, that that's not a reason to leave the process. I think that your continued engagement is of great value to the entire community, so please, please stick with us and support this school district. Thank you.
I agree with that, and I wanted to say one last thing, this, you know, if you saw what happened tonight, and you, you can see what happened to me, and you could see, this is a very, it's, it was a very contentious, um, decision, but no one should take it personally, and no one should take anything that happened tonight personally, and nothing was personal. So I appreciate everyone, you know, going high on this, and it was, I think, democracy in action, and, nobody gets what they want all the time, but I appreciate everyone, it was a hu, a stellar quality of candidates, every one of you.
With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned at 8:15.